All right, you're live tonight.
All right, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for the City Hood River for June 21st, 2021. My name is Mark Frost, and I'll be presiding tonight as the Chair of the Planning Commission. Let me start with the Planning Director's update, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I got a couple of things for you tonight. First off, we're joined by Ami Santalan, who joins, rejoins us as part of our development support team. Ami is gonna assume some production controls and some PC support roles. So you'll be seeing more of Ami's work in the coming months. That's your cue. Thank you, Ami. Coming up, we're gonna have three planning positions, Planning Commissioner positions, opening up this fall. And we will begin our advertising shortly, so please, as you get this notice, share with those that you know who are interested in serving and keep an eyes open. We'll be sharing this through the public as well, so thank you, Commissioner Tina Lassen. Your final meeting, which we're grateful that you have served this long and put in your time. That's a huge amount of gratitude and selfless effort on your part, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tina.
Thanks, Tina.
A pleasure.
Pending tonight's matter, the outcome of tonight's matter, we do not expect a July 6th, 2021 meeting. That was a Tuesday meeting, held on Tuesday in observance of Independence Day. However, we do have a number of applications now in process, in the review stage, completeness stage, that should be coming to you, we expect some as early as August. We do have an appeal intent on the middle housing code right now with no air assignments stated to date. We will also be working on that over the summer. And unless there are any other questions, that I think we only have one item on tonight for your consideration.
Hey Dustin, could you give us a quick update on that appeal process for the middle housing code? They filed an intent, but then where does that go? What's the next step?
Next step, currently, we are wrapping up the record, so we compile the record, which is a compilation of all the documents that, and testimony, presentations, minutes, that occurred from the time that the legislative hearing was kicked off to its conclusion. We file, we will be filing that draft very shortly, within days. And then, within that time, we go through a series of record review, record objections, and the applicant has 21 days, I believe, to, to complete its assignments of error. So at that point, they will declare what their assignments are, and we will then proceed, or then, then the matter is forwarded to Luba. So that's, that's where we're, that's the next steps in the, in the process.
Sounds great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the Planning Director? So I think, given that Bill, you're gonna be signing off, I think we might move the approval of the meeting minutes for May 3rd, 2021, to now, if we could. Does anybody have any questions or comments or feedback on those meeting minutes? Or if not, I would entertain a motion to approve those meeting minutes.
Just one thing, my name was spelled with an I instead of a Y.
I see that. Let's get those corrected before I sign them. Any other comments, questions? All right, somebody wanna make a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
Sure, I can make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from May 3rd, 2021, with the correction noted.
Do I have a second?
I will second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
I.
Amy, Tina?
Needed I.
Erica? Erica, you're on mute. Chair votes I.
Yeah, I wrote an I, sorry, too many mute spots.
Chair votes I, and that means that that motion passes, okay, great. All right, with that out of the way, I am going to call to order tonight's open public hearing. So ladies and gentlemen, I would like to open tonight's, June 21st, 2021, public hearing portion of the Hood River Planning Commission meeting. Let me start with a description of tonight's process and a few disclosures required by state law. First, it is our function in these land use cases to review the record for each application, take public testimony in a hearing such as this, and then determine whether the application meets or does not meet the applicable approval criteria in the Hood River Development Code. It is not our job to be more restrictive or lenient than these approval standards allow, but rather to interpret and imply the approval standards as written. If you have any questions about what are the applicable approval criteria, they are listed and analyzed in the staff report that was issued for each application prior to tonight's hearing. They will also be explained as part of the staff presentation for each item. Second, we are required to render an impartial decision on each application. This means that we cannot have a personal financial stake or bias that would prevent us from making an impartial decision. Before we begin each item, we will call for disclosure of bias, ex parte contact, and conflict of interest from each commissioner. Anyone in the audience will then have a, the opportunity to question any of us about those disclosures. Our decision tonight will be final unless appealed to the City Council. To appeal our decision, you have to participate either orally or in writing before the close of the record of the item you're interested in. You may raise before us any issue you might, you might wish to preserve for subsequent appeal to the City Council or Luba, the Land Use Board of Appeals. You must also present to us any evidence that you might wish the City Council or Luba to use or to see. Once we have closed the record of an item, that will end your ability to raise new issues or present evidence. So let me describe the order of events for the first hearing on tonight's agenda. First, we will hear the staff report, which is a verbal rendition of the written report that was issued prior to tonight's hearing. Secondly, the applicant may present testimony. You can assume that we have read the application and other material in the record, so please focus on any changes to the proposal or new information. We also want to hear from the applicant, any objections, the analysis, and any proposed conditions in the staff report. Finally, we ask that if there's an opportunity to testimony, if there's no opponent testimony later on, that the applicant should keep careful notes and, in your rebuttal, respond to that opponent testimony. Frequently, public testimony on land use application pertains to how the development will function or what impacts it will have. The applicant is often in the best position to answer those questions. Third, anyone else in favor of the proposal may testify. Then we will take neutral testimony or questions, neither for or against, and after that, we will accept testimony from anyone opposed to the proposal. Finally, the applicant has the right, the final, the right of final rebuttal. The applicant has the last word because the applicant has the burden of proof, proving compliance with the mandatory approval criteria. After that, we will check to see if staff has any parting comments following the conclusion of all public testimony. And finally, after everyone else, everyone interested in these matters has had a chance to testify, we will close the record, deliberate, and may render a decision tonight. Our decision, however, is not final until reduced to writing and officially issued. Our decisions are final unless appealed to City Council. To appeal one of our decisions, you need to participate orally or in writing before the close of the record, and you may, you must raise before us any issue you want to preserve for such appeal. If you need additional time to prepare your testimony, you can ask for continuance or that the record be kept open. If you want either of these options, you must make that request during the public testimony portion of the item you're interested in before we close the record on that item. So, thanks for all of that. Here are some basic rules for presenting testimony in tonight's hearing. Firstly, only present testimony in the order I just recited. Please begin with your name and mailing address. Please limit your testimony to the applicable approval criteria identified in the staff report. Our decisions are governed quite strictly on those approval criteria, so you should tailor your testimony to those criteria. They are the only issues which we can take into consideration. If you believe that other or different criteria apply, please apply, identify those and explain why you think they apply. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence with sufficient specificity to allow us or the parties to respond to the issue will preclude, preclude an appeal to the City Council or Luba based on that issue. And failure by the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval without, with specificity to allow us to respond to the issue will preclude, preclude an action for damages in Circuit Court. Finally, we may set time limits on the presentation of tonight's testimony, although there is no limitation on written arguments that may be submitted. So that is by way of procedural introduction for tonight's hearing. If anyone has any questions about the processes we go forward, please feel free to ask them now or during the public testimony portion of the hearing. So if there's any questions about the hearing, please raise your hand in terms of the process. Okay, so now we should, we will consider the item on tonight's agenda. File number 2021-07, an application by Mark Van De Zandt, Surround Architecture on behalf of Inland Pacific Oregon LLC for Planned Unit Development, Conditional Use and Subdivision to develop two single-family detached homes and four two-unit townhome buildings on a site accessing East Eugene Street and East Hazel Avenue with associated site improvements. A quorum of the Planning Commission is present, and I will now ask all commissioners to disclose any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest, or bias in this matter. I'm gonna go around the horn here, and so wait for me to call your name, going on my list, so let's start with Tina.
I have none.
Bill Irving.
I plan to recuse myself for the hearing tonight. I was represented the buyer with purchase, during the purchase of the property, so I will be recusing myself.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Amy? Erica?
I have none.
You have none, okay. I also have no, no bias or conflict of interest in terms of ex parte. I did actually go to the site, it's been a while since I've been in that neck of the woods, and and I was mostly curious about some of the concerns about the roadway width and, and access from this site onto those roads. And, you know, I did notice that many houses back out from their driveway onto these roads, so I noticed that that was not essentially unusual for what the applicant is looking to do. And yes, the roads are narrow. Okay. Would anyone in the audience like to question any commissioner on their disclosure, ex parte contact, bias, or conflict of interest, or otherwise challenge the participation of any member of the commission? I see one hand up came in for that, that's, McGregor, you are talking permitted.
This is John McGory, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Oh yeah, I'm at 21 East Hazel, right above the property. I appreciate Mr. Irving's disclosure, I'm not sure if there have been any prior meetings or considerations on this proposal. So my, my first question to Mr. Irving is, have you been involved in any, anything prior with, with respect to your Planning Commission duties on this property or this project?
I have recused myself from this hearing, I did. I have been in discussions with the applicant and the architect during development process.
Were those discussions relating to the approval process?
Those, I guess I could comment that those discussions were related to this specific land use application.
Okay, and have you had any conversations with other planning commissioners or planning commission staff regarding this project?
I have had no discussions with any other planning commissioners related to this project. I have been on calls with staff and the applicant and or architect related to this project.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
And I assume, sir, you're also getting a commission for this, right?
I have no, you know, one step, I have recused myself from the hearing. I represented the buyer when they purchased the property with the intent to develop it. No agreement with the buyer on this, on the outcome of this meeting or any subsequent future activity.
Is, is the buyer's commitment to buy this property contingent at all upon this, this passing?
No, the buyer's already purchased the property, they own it.
Okay, thanks very much, I'm sorry to take that time.
Okay, thanks very much for your question. All right, would any commissioner member like to make a motion to disqualify any other commissioner from hearing this application? Okay, seeing none. All right, we will move forward, all right, may we have the staff report, please, Dustin?
This matter was handled by Jennifer Caden. One of our staff planners, Jennifer, is gonna present staff findings tonight.
All right, thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you both, I think I'll try to share my screen just so you have a visual of the site, although hopefully everybody is familiar by now. This is my first time doing one of these meetings from City Hall, which is, my office is right above the police station. Are you able to see the?
Yep, we see your screen, thank you.
So you have before you an application for planned unit development to create 10 lots for eight townhomes and two single-family dwellings. As you can see, the site accesses East Eugene Street on the north and East Hazel Street on the south, with the two single-family dwellings accessing East Hazel Avenue and all of the townhomes accessing East Eugene Street. There's a shared driveway in the center of the project to access townhomes number five through eight, and then townhomes number one through four have direct driveway access to East Eugene Street. The site is zoned R3, which is our high-density residential zone. It's also in a geologic hazard overlay zone and in the wildland urban interface area. The proposal includes development of the dwellings and common open space, which is predominantly in this area, just south of townhomes lot seven and eight, with some other common open space around the perimeter of the site. Approximately 37% of the site is proposed to be common open space. I won't go through everything in my staff report, hopefully you've had a chance to review it. It focuses on standards in the R3 residential zone, conditional use standards, planned unit development standards, landscaping standards, site plan review and townhouse standards, and land division standards to create 10 different lots for the dwellings. As a reminder, you were reviewing preliminary plans that provide less detail than what the final plans that would be submitted for permits will include. And I'd like to highlight several issues that are discussed in the staff report. One is setbacks in building height. Because the plans are preliminary, we don't have enough detail in the plans to completely verify that the setbacks in building height standards are met. However, there is enough information to, to know that the applicant is intending that each of the dwelling units meets the 28-foot building height of the R3 zone, which then requires a five-foot side setback on the perimeter of the site. We will verify that with the final plans. However, it was not quite clear that the townhomes at the northern end of the site were using the, the correct standard for measuring building height, so we'll need to double-check that with the final plans. As I noted, the site is steeply sloped and in a geologic hazard overlay zone, so a geological analysis will be required for the development, and the development will be required to meet any of the recommended mitigation measures of the GeoTech report that is prepared by a licensed engineer with specialty in that area. I noted access on two streets, so there are a total of five driveways proposed. And I'll talk about this a little bit later, but an exception is requested for the driveway spacing of the three driveways on East Eugene Street. That is the subject of that, the, the standard for driveway spacing is in our land division code and also in our engineering standards. The city engineer has authority to review and approve design exceptions for driveway spacing, and he's indicated a willingness to, to do so. I noted, open space is both around the perimeter and in the center here of the site. In the PUD standards, 30% of the site is required to be reserved as common open space. And this code describes that as an area intended for common use, either privately owned or maintained or dedicated to the city. The area shall be designated for outdoor living and recreation or the retention of an area in its natural state. Open space may include swimming pools, recreation courts, patios, open landscape areas, or green belts with pedestrian, equestrian, and bicycle trails. Open space does not include off-street parking. So I would like you to make an intentional finding about the open space proposed around the perimeter of the site. If you agree that that constitutes what is intended by the open space standard. I noted in the staff report that the applicant submitted a traffic analysis, and you have received lots of comments from neighbors, traffic, I think, was probably the top concern mentioned in letters you received. The scoping of what was included in the traffic analysis letter was coordinated with the city engineer. The traffic analysis letter addresses existing conditions and roadways, trip generation from the proposed development, and distribution of vehicle trips to different intersections. It addresses vehicle access and circulation, access spacing, site distance, and intersection safety, primarily at East Hazel and East Eugene. The upshot of the report was that the preliminary design proposed meets site distance and intersection safety. They are, as I mentioned before, requesting an exception to the driveway spacing standard. But otherwise, other than based on the traffic analysis submitted, the city engineer has, is requiring associated street frontage improvements and installation of a street line on East Hazel, but there were not other issues identified in the traffic analysis by the traffic engineer or by the city engineer that needed to be addressed. As I noted, this is a, an area of significant neighbor concern. The land division standards in our code include a standard for maximum length and perimeter of a block. And in this area of town, our grid system doesn't exactly follow those standards due to steep topography. There is a provision in the code that allows for an exception to those standards if a multi-use pathway is provided. And then there's a further exception to that, if it's not practical to develop a multi-use pathway to allow for a pedestrian-only path. So I have included a recommendation of a condition of approval that would require, just that, would require a public pedestrian easement and pathway running through the center of the site that would allow pedestrians to connect from East Eugene to East Hazel. East Hazel is a connection to the Indian Creek Trail. And that issue was also mentioned in some written testimony you received from the Parks and Rec Director, who is supportive of this idea. Those are the issues I wanted to bring up from my staff report, I'm happy to answer questions. I would like to give just a general reminder that the grading, erosion control, stormwater plan, utilities, and street improvements are all subject to city engineering standards, and those are reviewed and approved by the city engineer after the land use review. The city engineer has reviewed the preliminary plans, however, to determine feasibility for purposes of meeting land use criteria and has provided recommended conditions where necessary to meet, meet the criteria. So depending on the findings that you make about open space and the pedestrian access, any other land use criteria that you want to discuss, I, I did recommend approval of the proposed development, and I included a recommended 47 conditions of approval and happy to answer specific questions about those, but I think I'd keep my verbal presentation relatively short and let you ask me questions that you have about the project.
All right, thanks, Jennifer. Anyone on the commission have a question for Jennifer?
Jennifer, after we hear public testimony to answer questions, is that allowed?
Yeah, yeah, that'll be available. So, so just to recap then, so I heard three items that were, let's say, for discussion, the driveway spacing, which you already have comments back from the city engineer regarding, so that sounds like from the city engineer's side, that, that sounds like they would be, they wouldn't have an issue with the driveway spacing?
That actually is only allowed to be varied from the standard by the city engineer, so that, that is the authority of the city engineer to review. I did include in my written staff report, and I did not mention it verbally, but the Planning Director did have some concerns about the three driveways on East Eugene Street, not so much from a driveway access spacing standard in the technical sense, but more from an aesthetic viewpoint and, and concern about so many garages facing the street from an urban design standpoint. And so I did include some of that in, in the commentary in my staff report, that's something we discussed with the applicant at the pre-application meeting and during this middle process. And I would recommend that you ask the applicant about the different options that he investigated for a site.
Okay, and then there's the open space discussion and the pedestrian, pedestrian-only path, okay? All right, any other questions for staff? All right, any other questions for staff before we hand it over to the applicant for their testimony?
Yeah, I have a question. When we look at, you know, some of the undeveloped land out by May Street, just as an example. If somebody wants to develop, say, that piece on the north side of May, kind of in that west side plan area. We talked a lot about how they have to bring everything up to standards, so like the streets have to have the sidewalks, the bike lanes, the sewer, the whatnot. Now, I heard you say that we could, we'd make an exception that because there wouldn't be room for whatever, a bike, a bike lane, so we'd have a pedestrian path. But is there any, is there anything in our municipal code that would require them to upgrade the road? I saw those things about they have to upgrade half the street, so I'm just curious what what specifically it would entail them doing to the roadway? To develop this property.
Okay, so let me address a couple of things there. When we look at bicycle standards, we we look at the transportation system plan to see if there are any planned bicycle improvements on the adjacent streets, and there are not. The exception that I was referring to was for the block length and perimeter standard. When you create new lots, there's a standard in our land division code that and some of our land division code standards are are written to apply to much larger developments when you're creating new blocks. But in any case, because this area is a block that exceeds our typical allowed block length standard. Allows for an exception to to that standard if you shortcut the per, you know, the length of the perimeter by offering a pedestrian access through the site. As far as the street frontage improvements go, on any street frontage improvements, we typically ask a developer to improve the street adjacent to the developing site to bring it up to the sta- street standards identified in the transportation system plan. The city engineer has authority to grant exceptions to those standards. And the process for doing that is that the applicant submits a design exception along with their engineering permit plans. The city engineer reviews that exception request and makes a determination. In this case, because there is such steep topography and as has been noted and will probably be noted by people testifying tonight. Most of the streets in the immediate vicinity of the site are not built to full standard, full width with sidewalk, planter strip, etc. Where the city engineer sees that there's ability to bring it closer to standard. He's requiring the developer to do so. And that's true on a project immediately to the east of here, the road on East Eugene, the roadway was widened by the developer of that project. And similarly, the city engineer is requiring the developer of this project to widen the road to the extent practical. Given the topography. And what that looks like on East Eugene Street is a little bit different than on East Hazel. There's a little bit more room to work with on East Hazel than East Eugene. But generally, it's described as half-street improvement from the center line of the street to the frontage of the property. And the details of the width of pavement and whether or not there's a sidewalk and how tall the curb is and those kinds of things are really up to the city engineer. So those details are not included in the recommended conditions of approval. Does that help answer your questions?
Yeah, that's super helpful. Is so is the city engineer the final say on these issues? Does the planning commission have any?
Well, the street standards are established in the transportation system plan.
Right, I guess I'm the exceptions when he has, when he makes to the plan.
Right, there's language right in the code that allows for city engineer to approve exceptions.
And that's the final word, if he approves that, and there's, is there any recourse for citizens or residents?
Uh, no, it's not, it it's really more of a technical review. And a policy review.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Let us move forward then with the applicant's testimony. So John, if you could find the applicants and move them over. Okay. Is that Tim?
Yep, now you're off mute.
Yes, yes, sorry, the technical side on this. I think Mark Vander Zandt is gonna start us out.
Okay. Have we found Mark?
I don't recognize any of the names in the attendees list.
I think you have a
There's a hand up.
Easy, easy.
All right, I think I see, okay, if you want to unmute yourself. What's the phone number for, and what's the, is it star nine? Okay, I think you're off mute. Go ahead, Mark, hello.
Hello, everybody. My name is Mark Vander Zandt and I live at thirty two sixty five Southwest Fairmont Boulevard in Portland, Oregon. And I'm here to present Hazel Ridge, a planned unit development. And I'm able to share my screen?
You bet. Okay, we see Hazel Ridge.
Thank you. I'm gonna start with introducing Tim O'Byrne. He's my client and the developer for this project. Tim, are you still?
Yep, I sure am. Can everybody hear me?
Yep, we hear you, Tim, yep.
Thanks, Mark, and good evening commissioners. My name's Tim O'Byrne. I'm the CEO of Inland Pacific Companies, which is the parent company for all of our various development companies, including Inland Pacific, Oregon Two LLC. I'm a third generation, or I'm the second generation of a third generation business. My sons are included in our business. It was started by my father in the early sixties. In Portland, Oregon, he was a lawyer with Miller Nash and transitioned over to be a developer. I grew up in Portland, went to a low high school. Ended, uh, got my law degree at University of Oregon, ended up practicing at Storre's. While our home office or our cock is centralized in Denver, Colorado, just because we have a national footprint. We have a pretty significant interest in Oregon as well as many other states. We, since I've joined the company in nineteen ninety five, you know, we've developed little over a billion dollars in in various different projects, which include hospitality, multifamily, single-family residential and commercial, and just a variety of other projects. My sons joined at different times and my youngest son lives in twelfth Oregon and and we've, I've, since I was thirteen, I think I've spent more weekends in Hood River than I than I, than I could think of. And we love the community, we love the area. It's always been kind of our go-to getaway place to get out of Portland and really enjoy. I really enjoy the river and enjoy the community, enjoy everything that Hood River has to offer. Really love to watch the growth. We're excited to be part of its Hood River's continued growth. And we're very excited about this project. We've, you know, we're very experienced developers. We've, we've done a whole handful of public-private partnerships. And, you know, we work very closely in all the communities that we do business in. You know, we, we've had a few neighborhood meetings. We've taken all of the neighborhood comments. We've gone back to our professionals, which I know Mark will go through and and studied each of, studied each of the concerns. And 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 you've figured out how to overcome or satisfy most of them. I know Mark again will go over that. Let's see, I'm trying to keep this fairly short. I I know, I know, I, you know, I I know that we worked very hard to meet all the criteria. We think we meet everything with the exceptions as outlined. We think the exceptions are are reasonable. We don't have any issues with these conditions. We think staff did an amazing job. We've been in lots of communication. We've had lots of meetings. We've had lots of go back and review things multiple times to make sure that they were right. And this is a project, like I said, that I think that we're very proud of. You know, one of the things that interested us in this project in the first place was the size of the parcel. Which is large, particularly for, you know, being located, you know, so proximate to downtown Hood River. And this was kind of a multi-lot, you know, kind of a land purchase, which for us with the density and and kind of where we wanted to be from a development perspective and and deployment within our company, it kind of met all of our criteria. You know, when we, when we first bought it, we wanted to make sure that our entire team was incredibly experienced in the city. In all of the cities that we work with, we find people that have worked with the cities, we have know a lot of the community issues, know a lot of the issues that we need to really focus on, know how to overcome a lot of you know, things that we need to to make it just a fantastic development. So we're proud of it. I know that some of the neighbors are concerned about traffic. We've looked at that significantly. We looked at all of the massing models and really tried to break this down into where it looked like six, you know, residential units. So we're really proud of it and and and, you know, as I went out to find the right professionals, Mark Vander Zandt kind of really easily surfaced to the top. You know, with his twenty eight years of experience and and doing all kinds of projects in Hood River, which I know he'll talk about in his introduction. You know, he, we felt he was the right guy. He's also assembled a team of very experienced professionals that have looked at all of the particular issues that are important for this development. So with that, we certainly hope that we answer any questions or get an opportunity to answer any questions, continue to work with our neighbors and and I'll let Mark, turn it over to Mark here to kind of walk through everything.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks, Tim. And my firm Surround Architecture, as Tim mentioned, has been in in Hood River for longer than I care to admit. I I first was introduced to Hood River by one of my clients, actually, when I lived in Seattle. He he introduced me to Hood River as he had bought a couple parcels there. And asked me to design a house for him there. Which is this Hazel Hazel Loft, which we designed for him in nineteen ninety two. Which sort of started, started my career there on Hazel and keep, keep doing more projects on Hazel. We've done quite a few housing projects in Hood River and the gorge. I'm just gonna share a couple, just to remind anyone who hasn't seen our work, the work that we do. This is Cascade Lofts, which was built in two thousand and three or four at the site of a former diamond fruit warehouse. And we designed Sherman Lofts roughly two thousand and eight. We've done quite a few different other types of buildings, for instance, this facility for shepherds down at the waterfront. Quite a few of the buildings down at the waterfront, just like this one at six oh three Portway. And then our current work includes, we are in the middle of construction drawings for this addition to the Columbia Gorge Hotel, which this this commission saw, I think, about two and a half years ago. This project is, as Jennifer mentioned, it's roughly twenty six thousand feet, square feet. It lies between Hazel and Eugene, kind of where Hazel gets to the ridge. And that's why we named it Hazel Ridge. This is a really interesting spot in Hood River. It is best, I I found, found it less dense than, you know, just the area to the west. So as opposed to some of the other projects that we had done in Hood River. We wanted to create something that really matched that scale in that particular part of that neighborhood. Some of the goals that we put together for this project is you know, basically to provide needed housing. And when we, when we looked at this, we wanted to provide kind of the most appropriate housing that we thought was, would would work in that particular area. So we we thought our product, based on our market research, was was one of the best approaches for that neighborhood. And we wanted to get the right kind of density for this particular spot. This R three density would allow sixteen units per acre and even more through this P U D. But when we, when we worked through this, we felt like ten was a pretty good, pretty good density match, not, we didn't, we didn't really want to overdo this spot right here. Tim mentioned that we, we wanted to really make this feel more like the scale of the single-family homes in this neighborhood. As opposed to some of the other buildings that we have done, which are, you know, multiple townhomes in a string. What we did here was to get the economy of building townhomes, but but basically building them in pairs. And we felt building these townhomes in pairs would mimic the size of of nearby, you know, single-family homes better than than, you know, three, four, five, six unit townhome buildings. So that that was really the strategy that 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 we settled in on as we came up with a site plan for this project. And then the other big goal that we all all feel really strongly about client and ourselves as designers is consistency of design and the consistency of the landscape. And that's, that was one of the things that also led us to to use a P U D process for this. I think that what you'll see or what you probably have seen in the, in our proposal is, you know, consistent buildings and can kind of a consistent design language and a consistent landscape. The landscape is entirely installed by the developer, you know, designed to be, you know, complete and installed in one shot and then managed by the homeowners association. So the goal is to have, you know, something that is managed to sort of always be kind of a consistent overall design aesthetic. And that, that actually, the P U D S actually lent lent itself well to that because developing the open space allowed us to sort of create a parcel that would be managed. And so in in addition to the beauty's flexibility for this somewhat complicated site. It also led us to to sort of a design philosophy. Lastly, this is a quote from the from the staff report. The applicant investigated several different potential layouts and the layout submitted is arguably achieves you know, the develop, the developer's goals and meets the city standards. And I I really want to applaud the city staff at this point, because we spent quite a bit of time multiple meetings to work through different options. So and and really the driveway spacing issue is the particular one where, you know, we had a different layout with ten units that met the driveway spacing standard better, but it had six driveways instead of five. And so I think everybody the same conclusion that, you know, it might be best to use the spacing standard to get a layout that achieves, you know, everyone's goals. So I I agree completely that that this layout best achieves, you know, the city's goals, the city's standards and and my client's development goals. And you've seen this, it's really just showing the the basic layout, the six buildings. Four buildings with two units each that have, you know, attached two unit townhomes and two single-family homes near Hazel Avenue. I do want to mention the street improvements then. We will be widening the streets and I think that the, again, you know, there was a lot of conversation or a lot of discussion between our, our engineers and our designers and the city staff in terms of what what would be the most appropriate street widening. And I think it's important to note that there are, you know, really beautiful oak trees on the north side of Eugene, for instance. That I think everybody agreed was, would be it would be a shame to lose any of those trees for the sake of maybe creating some parking there. So I think everybody agreed. So I think everybody agreed that, you know, improving the street and widening it, but only to the extent where we would not impact those trees to the north. I think, again, the, my team and the city, we came to some great conclusions on that. And we will be improving the street trees in that area, both on Eugene and Hazel. We will, there is room on Hazel to build a new sidewalk. We're going to underground a bunch of power lines, well, the visual aspect of that neighborhood. And we're going to make some significant stormwater improvements. Right now, I think that parcel is, I've got a lot of pavement on it and a lot of surface water hits the pavement that's on that parcel. You know, just sheets to the north, onto Eugene, runs down Eugene and then dumps into a bunch of people's homes, people's yards and maybe even their homes. And our, and our proposal will really actually improve on that tremendously because we will have virtually all the surface collection absorbed into our underwater stormwater system. So I know the goal of the city is to have no net increase, but we're going to have a, you know, a great improvement beyond net, beyond zero net increase in terms of the infrastructure improvement for stormwater in that neighborhood. Just, just by meeting the standards, it will really make a big difference on what's downhill. I'll touch on the traffic and parking. We have the traffic study completed to the city's satisfaction. This, the quote is from the traffic report that the proposed development meets all the standard criterion requirements from the Hood River Municipal Code, Section 17.20, 060, CND. Well, that was confirmed by city engineering. And we exceed the parking stall requirement on site. And we actually really liked the idea that was conditioned, which is we provide a pedestrian path connecting Hazel and Eugene. In fact, we had, we'd planned a path there, but it makes sense to make that a public path. We agree that connecting to Indian Creek Trail and connecting through the site makes a lot of sense. This drawing shows the stepping of the various buildings on the site and how it fits into the site. I'd like to note that, you know, for the townhomes, which are in the lower portion of the site here, that our, our plan includes putting garages in basements, sort of, you know, in the least useful part of every building. And the other thing that I think is fair to note is that to, to do these buildings and meet this access requirements for fire trucks, et cetera, we're actually carving, carving into the ground a fair amount to, to achieve that. So the net effect of these buildings will be, you know, more like two-story buildings or two and a half story buildings. Our, our goal is to really carve these in and not have them sit up off the ground, like is often the case on hillsides. I'm going to quickly run through these floor plans. And, and really just to explain two things, every one of these townhomes has garages that include a pretty significant amount of storage alongside where the car is located. And then the other thing that these plans hopefully show is just simply that we have kind of carefully designed these units and what, what we're presenting in this proposal is exactly what you will get. This is not going to be a situation where we come back later with something different. We are pretty detailed along with a lot of this so that it would, we know with confidence that we are going to provide a plan that meets, that meets all the conditions. This, these site elevation show against the stepping and the breaking down of the mass on the hillside. And these drawings show the visual of the units facing streets. And the thing I'd like to note about that is is that breaking it down into, into these two unit buildings and then stepping them kind of in every direction. So this is showing, this bottom drawing shows units facing Eugene Street. Eugene Street slopes quite a bit in this direction. So we're actually able to step these buildings quite a bit. And I think the net effect of that is to create more variety, less monotony. I think it ultimately makes these buildings feel more built in. And this was an early rendering that, that, or a little sketch that I had done. And I think it's still pretty consistent to this. I don't think we're going to have it be brightly colored, but this drawing showed, you know, kind of a streetscape and how these units face the street. And one of the questions that was posed to us during planning meetings was, is, you know, could you make these units, these four units that are on the north side and facing Eugene Street? Could you, could you bring the access for those to the other side? Bringing the access to the other side was really difficult. And then it also made these units feel like, you know, that was like the backside of the units. So our, our plan was to create little plaza, driveway plazas with entries, with canopies, with little yards so that these streets, so that these units would face the street like you would normally engage the street with, with, built with homes. So we, we felt this was a pretty appropriate version of planning for East Eugene Street. Checking my notes here. I think I've touched on the concerns that were brought up, that Jennifer brought up, the three, three or four issues that, that she brought up. That, that is my presentation. So I'd be happy to answer any additional questions that anyone has.
Well, we look at that picture and you mentioned kind of front yard, but to be clear, all of the space around the homes on the outside perimeter of the site and the open space section, that's all to be maintained by the homeowners association?
That is correct. And they're really not going to be designed to be active outdoor spaces. And it's partly because it's so, you know, sloped, with the exception of, I will go back to this plan. Sorry, takes a while. You know, there's, there's the one flat spot on the site where the existing home sits. And we took the one flat spot and we dedicated that for the open space for this, for this development. And I think the narrative notes that we are going to, there's this little shed that's a little chapel that sits right here on the site right now. We're going to move that over to this open space. So this is, this is relatively flat. I mean, there's a little slope in this zone, but a lot of this is flat. So this is actually a fairly useful spot. Again, it's open space and it's common use. But, you know, the, the balance of the site is really pretty steep. And if, and, and yes, so your answer to your question is yes. The balance of the site is basically that all the outdoor landscape spaces are designed and then maintained by the homeowners association.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mark or Tim?
And just to clarify, there will be no sidewalk on Eugene Street? Is that correct?
That is correct. In reviewing the amount of space that's available there between, you know, basically where the roads meet up on the east and west side and the property line. And then this grove of really nice oak trees on the north side, there's really enough room there for, you know, 20 to 22 feet of paving. And so right now, I think it's only like 14 feet of paving or something close to that. And so it is going to be widened, but there's not really enough room there to widen for a sidewalk and nor, nor would there really be probably room in unadjacent parcels on Eugene Street as well. Whereas Hazel has more, has more appropriate places for sidewalks. So it was engineering's conclusion, I don't want to speak for them, but it is our conclusion that, you know, Hazel could have a sidewalk that connected to things, whereas Eugene probably wouldn't.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioners have a question for Mark? All right. Appreciate that. Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Mark. So what we'll do now is we will move into public testimony period. We're going to do this three times through. First time, we'll look for proponents, i.e. those that are in favor of the development, the application. And then we will look for neutral testimony, either those who are neither for or against. And then we will have those who are opposed. So I'm going to, the way we'll do this is we will, we have a list of those who I think, I think, I don't know if, John, are you on? We have a list of those that have signed up ahead of time. And, and we'll go through those. Are all of those, John, in, in opposition? Are there any proponents or neutral testimony?
You'll have to defer to Jennifer on what their stand. They just have names.
Okay, Jennifer?
Um, I, I don't think I had anybody who was planning to testify as a proponent, but I would recommend that you ask and have people raise their hand.
Okay. So that's what we'll do then. So the first time through, let's look for anyone who is a proponent, i.e. wants to speak in favor of the development. If you want to do that, please raise your hand, click on the raise your hand icon, we'll promote you to speaking. And, and then you'll have to pull yourself off mute. Maybe can somebody remind me what the, what the unmute button is if you're on a phone? Star nine?
I believe it's star six.
Star six to unmute? Okay, thanks for that. All right. I don't see any proponents, any neutral testimony, anybody who wishes to speak neither for nor against. All right. I see two names. If we could promote Mike and then Samantha. Mike, you're on.
Yeah. Hi, everybody. Thanks for hearing me out here. I live at 515 East Third Street, just a couple of hundred yards from this development. And I'm neither a proponent or am I opposed to it. I guess I would start by saying that I'm impressed with all the, the, the thoughtfulness that has gone into this. I anticipated this property getting developed in a fashion such that it is ahead of time. So I'm glad to see it's being done with such professionalism and, and, and thoughtfulness, both from the city and the developer. You know, my biggest concern as I submitted in writing are, are, is traffic and pedestrian safety in the area. I've heard a lot of good things about how the developer plans to improve some of the roads in the immediate proximity of the property. But more specifically, there are three to four access points into this area, which are the only access points into it. They are the corners of East Eugene and East Hazel Avenue. They are the corners of East Hat, East Hazel Avenue and East Fourth Street. And then again, the corners of East Eugene and East Bluff Road. Nobody can get in and out of this area or this particular development without crossing over those intersections, both on foot and, and by vehicle. And in all four of those, and there's even maybe a fifth where Hazel kind of takes a, a turn to the west. The street is effectively pinched down to a single lane, one lane. And I, I don't know specifically the developer's responsibility, but my question is, what is the city going to do if they are going to approve this project? They've approved many other large scale projects in this neighborhood. This one's by far the largest and I anticipate there'll be others in the not too distant future. I, I don't see anything so far which mitigates safety on those intersections. And the traffic study, as I read it, really didn't take into account weekend or summer traffic. As, I'd say as much as half of the residents in, in that area I just described are not full-time residents, they're weekenders and holiday folks. There's a number of shortcuts there. And if a, if a, a traffic study was going to really reflect reality, it would be done, you know, on a weekend in the summertime, not on a Wednesday in the middle of the winter. And it may reveal, you know, the true amount of traffic. You know, I, I'm speaking anecdotally. I walk these streets with my pets daily. And on those few intersections I just mentioned, I've been, I've, I've come close to losing my life on more than one location. And if I just add up the number of zoned onsite parking spaces for this development plus service vehicles and summer traffic, I estimate that this development alone is going to add as much as 135 daily traffic trips per day. 135 daily traffic trips per day to the neighborhood. Now, I'm not saying that that's, you know, a horrible thing. It is what it is. But if the city is going to approve this project, at the same time, how is the city going to address these three or four choke points that are extremely dangerous, not just for vehicle traffic, but for pedestrian traffic? That's all I have to say.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Mike. That's very, very useful testimony. Okay. Next up then, we have Samantha Westra. If you can come off mute.
Hi.
We hear you.
We live at 215 East Eugene. So we're right, we're the property just east of the proposed and we have a rock wall that, well, boulders, we have boulders that may be kind of on to the other property. And I was wondering if that, those, if our boulders are going to be taken down or if you looked at that and what do you, what, what's going to, what's going to happen with the boulders between the two properties?
Thanks, Samantha. Do you want to have a response from Mark? Mark, do you want to, Mark Vanderzand, do you want to answer that here now? Rather than wait for the rebuttal?
If I may. Yeah, Samantha, I, I was taking a look at that myself. And we can certainly design this without impacting any boulders that that you have on your property. And if there's boulders that straddle the two properties, that's, that's probably not a problem either. We're, we're planning to do a similar boldered wall for the retaining system in that area. The, the one thing that, you know, what we might want to do is probably meet and review what we're planning and see if what we're planning could, or see, see if what you have would be potentially even improved in any way with, with the work that we'll need to do right there. Not sure, you know, that makes any sense, but I would say we get together and review that more carefully and make sure that you're, you know, whatever you have in place there is not impacted by whatever we do and/or we even make it better by combining our efforts.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
Good question.
I guess I just add Samantha, if you, I've got your name written down and I think I know how to contact you. So I'll, I'll make a note to reach out to you to, to do, do, do such a thing.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Second question is on Hazel Street. There's access to, as it was mentioned earlier, to the Indian Creek Trail. And as Mike was saying earlier, that, that's a lot of cars go really fast around there. Is there any plan right now to put any signage or crosswalk or anything there just to slow people, slow cars down as people walk their dogs across the street and the pedestrians? I mean, there's, the trail's heavily used and that's a concern as well. And just want to know what maybe the city might be doing about that.
Okay, we'll put that on the list. We'll ask some of these questions back to staff when we wrap up the Q and A portion or testimony portion. All right. Any other topics, Samantha?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right. So what we'll do now, that is, we've heard from proponents, we've heard from neutral testimony, now we're looking for those who are opposed to the application. Maybe if I could ask Jennifer, did we have a list? maybe if I could ask Jennifer, did we have, uh, listed names that we collected ahead of time? And then also, if you also didn't put your name down ahead of time, we'll ask you to raise your hand. So Jennifer, can you just remind me who those people are? We can call them out in order?
Um, Jonathan might have the most up-to-date list. I'm looking down the, the list. And so this is not necessarily in order that I receive them, but in order I see them on the screen.
Okay.
Um, Alan Schmidt may have wanted to testify.
Okay, then let's just get those down and then we can ask people to read.
Okay, you want the list? Brad Shell.
Okay.
Um, Margot Blosser.
Okay.
I had a few others I'm not seeing on the list. So while you get going, I'll double check my.
All right, so that's what we'll do then. We'll go with Alan, Brad, Margot. And then if you, um, also want to add your, your name, um, we will, uh, ask you to put your hand up, raise your hand, and then we will add you to the list. So let's start with, um, Alan Schmidt.
Uh, Mr. Chair, sorry, before I can add to the list real quick, I see, uh, Leslie Boss, Margot Blosser, John McRory, Mike Stroud.
Mike already testified.
Sorry, we got Mike.
Yeah, and, um, I, yes, John McRory was on my list. I don't know if it was primarily what he already asked during the uh, earlier portion of the proceedings.
Okay, all right. So let's start with, um, with, uh, Alan Schmidt and then we'll have Brad and then Margot.
One more, I just saw, uh, Chris Gardner.
Okay. Now, uh, in the interest of, uh, making sure everyone gets a chance to speak, can we, uh, please keep our, um, testimony to five minutes or less? That would be appreciated. Okay, Alan.
Okay, unmuted. Um, thank you all.
All right.
Thank you all. And I, I think I'm maybe out of sequence on the, I'm not necessarily opposed to the development. Um, I'm in this business myself and appreciate density in the zone that we're in and one of the reasons I purchased my property. Um, but, so I live down the street in the, in the place where, uh, Mr. Vanegeren said, you know, collects most of the, most of the fund stormwater, um, runoff. And as a landscape architect, I'm trying to play with how to use that. I actually have a grader in my driveway, getting ready to, to deal with some of it myself. Um, but so thank you for the considerations of piping that material, uh, or piping that, that, that runoff into a correct situation and the associated landscape stuff you're doing with connecting, connecting Eugene and Hazel. That's great. Um, you know, another thought I had in talking about the traffic, I know we have plows and things, uh, but ha- have we considered traffic calming at all here? And I have children on the street and I know there's other young children and families, uh, nearby. So just thinking about those traffic volumes and I'll, uh, I'll sign off and, and let the conversation, uh, go.
All right. Thanks for your comments. Thanks, Alan. All right, let's go to Brad Shell. Talk, okay, Brad, are you there?
Yes, I am. Thank you. Uh, like Alan, you know, I, I would have to say that, uh, I'm not necessarily opposed to the, the project. Um, you know, in the ideal world, we'd like, like it to stay where it is because it doesn't impact the neighborhood at all. But I, I'm a realist and I understand. I understand that these things are gonna get developed. Um, I s- I share a lot of similar concerns. However, I just wanted to point out, and I think, um, in part, uh, Tina's comments about, you know, widening the street and also Marx. I just wanted to point out, I lived, I'm sorry, I live at, uh, four twenty-three East Second, which is actually, uh, is actually directly, uh, across the street below, uh, the project. But there are, I just wanna point out that there are eighteen oak trees that would be cut down if the street were widened, even I'm gonna guess even five, six feet uh, to the north. And, and if it was even, if it was wide even further, it would be more. It's kind of the last pocket of beautiful old trees there. So I, um, I just wanted to point that out. And I'm very much apprec- appreciate Marx, uh, Mark and what we're hearing from the city's goal to, to preserve those. Um, so I wanna say thank you to that. You know, I am just slightly concerned that, as was pointed out earlier, that the city engineer can just say, nope. I wanna, you know, a few feet wider and cut them all down. That doesn't seem, it seems like the public ought to have some input on that because one of the first pieces of feedback that was circulating around the neighborhood, uh, once notice of the project went up was what's gonna happen to the trees? So, uh, anyway, I just wanted to express that concern that it would be really, really challenging for a lot of us if we didn't get a way in on that, if the city engineer decided he wanted them gone. So, thank you.
All right. Thanks very much, Brad. Next, we'll go to Margot Wasser. Okay, Margot, uh, you can tell if you can hear me? Yep, we hear you.
Okay, great. Um, so I live at, uh, four twenty-three East Third Street.
And although I am not necessarily opposed to this development, I do feel that the applicant is trying to put too many houses uh, on the site for the neighborhood. It's too much density. And, um, after reading the staff report, the thing that really stood out to me was that all fourteen community members that wrote comments all talked about issues with road safety. And the Hazel Ridge Design Team seems to think that the roads are safe enough to accommodate the proposed density. But to me, the neighborhood seems to be saying, you are crazy. These roads are, are questionable at the current density. The traffic study done by Bell Engineering used a number of indicators for road safety. The historical ODOT crash data used, to me, only says that the roads work for a given level of density. Also, I know for a fact that some accidents that have occurred in the neighborhood are not in the ODOT data. I had a car go over the embankment next to my house and land in my yard. The accident was never reported. The biggest road safety issue I see is the three driveways on East Eugene. Two driveways for the townhouses that directly face East Eugene and a third driveway for the houses, townhouses at the back of the property. Having three driveways on East Eugene means that at any one time, four cars can be backing onto the street and two cars can be accessing the center shared driveway at the same time. The number of vehicles using this road segment makes a driveway design very different from the new construction that has previously occurred in the neighborhood. As best as I can tell from the pictures in the traffic study, the applicant has not evaluated a driver's ability to see oncoming tro- traffic from the two townhouse driveways on East Eugene by providing sighting distances. Only the center driveway locate, location appears to be evaluated for sight distance. It's interesting to me that in a traffic analysis study done at three sixteen East Eugene, one block away by Ferguson Associates, a dense civil engineering firm, he used intersection sight distances for the single driveway, which are significantly greater than the stopping sight distances used by Bell Engineering. To close, I would like to say to the owners of the property, Tim and Colin, you say that you're gonna live in one of the units on Hazel Street. Do you really wanna see one of your neighbors getting into an accident because they are backing out of one of your townhouse driveways? And they cannot adequately see oncoming, oncoming cars or cyclists in the East Eugene travel lane? You have an award-winning architect surround architecture and our former contract engineer, Stone, Stoner Bell, working on this project. I find it hard to believe that you cannot design a driveway that has one access point that allows drivers to enter the travel lane headfirst and see oncoming traffic. One access point for the driveway would allow for much-needed off-street parking to be created. Three townhouses to the east are a great example of a single driveway design. And finally, to the planning commission, I've heard planning commission members express skepticism about the traffic study for the multi-use development on Taylor Street. And here again is another traffic study that does not seem adequate. Please remember that there are no do-overs for road safety. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you, Margot. Next, we'll go to Leslie. All right, Leslie?
Hi, this is, uh, Greg Boss, Leslie's husband. Uh, we live on, we live on one-one-four, uh, East Eugene. Um, it, my, my concern is you're bringing essentially ten households into the area um, and provide, you know, no, uh, overflow parking in any shape or form. Um, given the, you know, narrowness of the roads as everyone has spoken to, uh, there's no street parking available on East Eugene. There's very limited street parking on East Hazel. Um, could you please address that and, 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 you know, what is the plan as terms of if guest parking, overflow parking for this, uh, for the structure?
All right. Thank you for that. Okay, next up, uh, we have John Gregory. Okay, you are, you're alive.
Okay, hey, thanks. Thanks so much. I live at, uh, twenty-one East Hazel, which is, uh, I, I'm sitting in my kitchen. I can see the property from here. It's down below me. So I guess I'm within, I don't know, two hundred fifty, three hundred feet. I have a very good view of East Hazel. I, uh, I go down and I, uh, I wa- I run East Hazel down to the, uh, the Indian Creek path, probably three or four times a day I run that. I, uh, do a lot of biking. I, I bike down to the, uh, the old highway. I make my way through the neighborhood, the East Eugene, a couple of times a, a week. Uh, as, as do other members of my family. I use, uh, East Eugene and Hazel as a pedestrian and as a bike rider a lot. I am not alone. When we talk about traffic studies, I might suggest that somebody do a pedestrian count on East, uh, Hazel. The people that walk from the west, uh, on East Hazel, uh, to Indian Creek, it might astound you. There are, I bet you there are hundreds of people a day that do that. And it's families with dogs, uh, with kids on training wheel bikes. Uh, it is very popular. Since we've been on tonight, I've looked down and I've, I've seen like ten or twelve people walk by. It's, it's, it's hugely popular and, and for very good reason, uh, for pedestrians. Now, I, I, I appreciate Mr. Byrne, uh, showing up tonight. I'm, I don't think any of us uh, should be surprised that Mr. Oburn and his, uh, billion-dollar national footprint company from Colorado are so interested to come here to Hood River to make money for their investors. That's what's going on. I appreciate that. I'm a capitalist myself, but I do oppose this because it is not good for the neighborhood. Uh, it is not good for Hood River. I, I think that, I, I was very happy to hear Mike Stroud talk about the roadway. I think it was an incomplete and a misleading traffic study that was done. What it fails to recognize it wa- is what Mr. Stroud talked about. And that is, and, and I know this because at five o'clock tonight, I went down in front of my house with the tape measure and I measured the width of the road, okay? At, at the west end of East Eugene, where it intersects with Hazel. In order to get onto E- East Eugene, the road is less than eleven feet wide, okay? Uh, it's barely room for one car. I've, I've looked at the T S P and what's allowable for roads and, and what, what kind of width you have, what kind of roadways you should have for access to a P U D. And it certainly isn't, uh, less than eleven-foot road. And even if it were, I, I would urge you as a planning commission to, uh, to look at it and see, is that really what we want? And it kind of raises the question, well, okay, let me go that, that's on the, that's on the east side. If you, if, the only way, the only way to get to this development on the, the lower part of it, that serves eight of the units that, that access East Eugene, I'm not talking about now the ones that access Hazel. But the only way to get to that is from the east or the west, from the east or the west, okay? If you, if you come from, um, uh, the west, that's where it's eleven feet wide. And you cannot, you cannot widen that road. If you could widen it, it would be more wide. There's, there's inches off the pavement. There's like an embankment that goes down. I'm not sure of who was talking before about a car going off the road. But, you, you know, I don't drive that road at night. Forget it. And it is harrowing to walk or to have a bicycle. You have to slow down and almost watch your bike there because it's so narrow. There's a car, for- forget it. You can't be there. Um, and you, you gotta kind of tell yourself, if you've been there, like me with a, with a tape measure, you know exactly what it is. But if you see the signs with, you know, speed limit, ten miles per hour, extreme caution, that kind of thing, you know it's, you know it's dangerous. The city has decided it's dangerous. And I, I frankly can't imagine a city engineer saying that's okay. And even if a city engineer said that's okay, I think you guys as, as, uh, uh, members of the planning commission have the authority to approve or not approve a P U D. Uh, you have, you have discretion no matter what. So I, I would ask you to, to exercise that discretion. But okay, so that's one, one way coming from the west. The other way, if you go from the west down East Eugene past the property, uh, maybe eighty feet, you come to another place in the road. It's right before you reach Forest Street. Now, Forest Street intersects with East Eugene and Forest Street comes up to Hazel. Before you get to Forest Street, the, uh, the road is eleven feet, six inches wide. Okay, just measured it. No room for error, no room for expansion. Uh, why, I, I mean, how, how you could develop something like this, adding all that traffic? Um, ki- kind of amazed me. Why is it needed housing? Is that what it is? Are we gonna sacrifice people's safety? Uh, and are we gonna sacrifice, uh, uh, the neighborhood feel, uh, for quote, needed housing? Uh, we all know, and I have nothing against it, but we all know these are, you know, these are gonna be over million-dollar, uh, houses. Uh, we have, uh, Mr. Byrne saying in a meeting that, you know, he likes to be here on weekends. And I'm, I'm sure the other buyers of these houses will like to spend their weekends here too. Uh, that's what happens to the million-dollar houses around here. And it's up to you, I guess, to decide whether it's quote, need is housing as, as Mr. Vanderzen testified tonight. Uh, I don't, I, I can't say there, but it's not safe. There's, there's no question it's not safe. Uh, and I, you know, I, I use it, but more to the point, I see a lot of families use it, a lot of small children use it, a lot of pets use it. It's not safe. You, you, not hearing it just from me, but you're hearing it from all the neighbors. We were at a, uh, neighborhood meeting uh, when we all talked about this and, uh, all, all that was, all, all those views were given. Uh, the, the other thing I'd like to say frankly is that I think this is premature. I really appreciate uh, all the work that went into this, uh, by, uh, by the developer, uh, and by staff. But when you look at it, you read the report and then what I do is I step back and I say, well, wait a minute, what? What information did they have and what information was really in that report? And here's what I come up with. I come up with, yeah, it'd be a good idea to have a path that goes through the property. Uh, Ms. Vanderzen, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing his name. I don't have it written down, so I don't know the exact spelling. But he says, yeah, we're gonna have a path. Well, it's not in the plans. Uh, and then we hear, well, it's preliminary plans, not final plans. Well, it's not there. I don't know how it gets there. How did, what does it go through the driveway? The, if you look at the, if you look at the plat of the property, where does it go? There's not room on the sides. Um, does it go through the driveways? Uh, hard to say, but anyhow, it's not there. Uh, well, are the heights of, are the height, are, are they within code? Well, no, we don't have enough information to know, but we'll make that a condition. Well, how about the setbacks? Do the, are they, are they legal setbacks or are they too small? Well, we don't know. We're gonna have to wait. We'll make that a condition. Well, the driveways don't really work out because the driveways are against the code. We have to adjust the driveway spacing. Uh, well, we'll have to wait on that to see if we can get approval for that. Uh, how about the open space? We have one, one open space, but then there was a question, uh, saying that we have to consider whether we can use area in the setback for open space. We, we've seen this in P U Ds before. We call it open space, but usually it's totally unusable because it's too steep and there's plantings there. Uh, but there's, there's no building on it, uh, so we could call it an open space. But, um, I, I think that's a, that's a, that's a mistake to do that. My, my point is, is that there's nothing that I can really see in that report that has been finalized as to what is gonna be in the final plan. Uh, you know, we, we have things like, and this kind of frankly appalled me, but when we, when there was a discussion there about what the design standards were, the, and what the findings were, uh, the comment from staff was, well, the design standards are kind of ambiguous and hard to understand. But, uh, But, uh, this particular, uh, design team is one of the, uh, the, the best we have in Hood River and their homes are the most expensive in Hood River. And therefore we think the design will be okay. I mean, that's not complying with, with, with what you guys as, uh, planning commission is supposed to do. So, uh, I'm sorry it's gone on too long. And those are basically my points, but I, I think that, that you shouldn't rely on this, this preliminary, uh, plan. Wait for a final plan. See if they really need it. Insist on it. You have the right. This guy in Colorado and this billion dollars, he can wait a few weeks. Uh, there's no urgency here. Uh, I don't think that we should have anything forced or rushed. I think that, uh, we as a community and you as a planning commission, uh, should insist on compliance with the code. Uh, not wait for something that you have now as contingent. Uh, I, 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 I say that and, uh, I, I have just no doubt that there's going to be a lot more development in Hood River than there is now. There's going to be no doubt that in this particular area, and, and no offense to the people who have testified here, but a lot of the houses down there, including the, the present one, are going to be torn down and there's going to be new developments. I think you have to look right now at what the standards are and make sure you are rigorous in what you do. I'm, I'm not asking for any, uh, uh, any of the neighbors that have testified to me to be ge- given any uh, favors or anything like that. But, but don't, don't allow, uh, this development company to get away with anything either. Insist on rigorous, uh, compliance with the code.
All right. Thank you.
Very much. And I apologize for going so long.
All right. Thanks for your comments. All right. I see Scott, uh, Chanel. And then there's also Chris Gardner, who put his name on the list. I don't see Chris's name on the list, but, uh, let's go with Scott, please.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. So hey, this is Scott Chanel. I live at 119 East Eugene. So this is, I'm probably the closest of anybody to this thing. Um, so just a couple of things. Um, I do echo Greg's comments about the overflow parking. That is really an issue. I mean, you can have as many parking spaces as you, as you want inside, but people have people over all the time and there's all kinds of extra traffic. It is not an easy street to have, you know, to, to, for that, this, this, this street does not deal with that problem. And I can't imagine how 10 units, 10 units is going to, well, we're going to see what, we'll see what's going to happen. But I don't think it's going to be good, especially in the summer. Straight up, I'm, I'm, I was, I was surprised, um, about the sheer number of units that are planned, 10. You know, beyond my worst case expectation. So, um, it feels super dense to have six buildings replaced, you know, on what really was four lots. Fisher's still, uh, you know, he owned four lots, right? So six buildings with two units on each one. And this is really sort of subjective. But I realized like, okay, technically you could build 16 and that would be according to this number of feet and that number of feet and all these things. And yes, you finally, you could squeeze it in there. And okay, you're only doing 10, but like this, this, after these are all done, does it really fit into the neighborhood aesthetically? Is that density, does that density really fit in? And I looked to the, the units just to the, to the east of that. The bottom, the one, the lower one is okay. The top one, the one above that, so it's like a total of six and that's on, I believe a larger, well, I can't say for sure, but a, a larger area. Um, but anyway, this is a, this is, this is pretty, pretty dense. So the third thing I just want to express concern about was the trees that we have just to our, just to our east. Um, so there's some of them, some of them on my side. You know, just a few feet. Some of them are on the other side, just by a foot or two. And they kind of form a nice natural dividing line between, between this lots. You know, it's very nice. But building, um, building these things six feet away from that line almost guarantees that something is going to happen to those trees, whether they're on the fu- on, on my side or the other side. So I'd like to get a response about, you know, what's, what's going to happen here? How are you, how are you going to deal with that? That's all I have to say.
All right. Thanks, Scott. Okay. Um, that's everybody who's on the list. I don't, is there a Chris Gardner? Okay. I don't see a Chris. Okay. All right. So if, is there anyone else who would like to speak from the public? All right. So what we do now is we will go back to the applicant. Uh, Tim and Mark, you have the opportunity to rebut some of the things that were raised by the neighbors. Uh, so over to you.
Thank you. Got a series of items here. I'll just try to go through them and not any particular order. There was, uh, a question about traffic calming. I don't think that, uh, our team would be opposed to having further discussions about traffic calming on Eugene Street, but I, I didn't, um, get any sense from the city that that was something that they wanted to pursue, but, um, we would certainly be, uh, uh, happy to discuss it. Um, I think that's something that can happen, um, during the development of the frontage improvement work that we, we could, bring that subject up again with them and discuss, um, and I'm, I'm guessing, you know, speed bumps or something like that could, could be discussed. I, I will say that, um, I think that these improvements, um, will, uh, the, the improvements that we're doing will, you know, cha- change the complexion of at least, um, you know, 125 feet of Eugene Street. And, uh, I think it's like 175 feet of, of Hazel. And, you know, as it was brought up, there probably will be more, more projects in that neighborhood. And, you know, the city as, as, as we've always seen it, you know, incrementally improved streets with projects, um, you know, similar to ours. So we're, we're, this project actually is providing a pretty significant, I think that's close to 300 lineal feet of, of road improvement, um, in that neighborhood. There was a question, um, that was brought up about the trees that are, uh, on the north side of Eugene. And whether or not the, uh, city engineer could sort of unilaterally wipe those trees out. And I, I'll, I'll just say this, that, uh, on several projects that I've got, city, uh, there's really not much willingness to take out trees that, uh, I think that I, I, I certainly can't speak for any, anybody at the city, but, but from my perspective, I don't see that happening. I think that, um, there might even be an ordinance that protects those trees beyond, you know, just the, the policy that I've seen put into place. I, I heard that there was some skepticism raised about, you know, the, the, uh, thoughtfulness or, or the validity of any traffic studies. You know, I'm not a traffic engineer. We hire traffic engineers and then the traffic engineers provide information that city engineers then review and evaluate. In this case, the scope of the traffic study was expanded during the middle of it, which I think was for good. The city increased the scope of it so that it could look, you know, a little bit more beyond the local, uh, part of this project. So I do think that the engineers involved were actively looking at this. I, I feel confident that, um, you know, those, the, the city's review of the traffic engineering studies that were done, um, are, are, uh, adequate and, um, thoughtful and well done. I'll, uh, and then there was, um, a question brought up about the oak trees near the, I think it's the, would be the west property line. You know, it's, we, we've shown protecting those trees in our plan. So the, the protect action of the tree absolutely protected through, you know, what we've proposed on our plan. So that's, that goes into this P U D application. And I, I just think it's like a good time for me to say, like, we, we've been doing these projects in Hood River for a long time. One of those projects I showed you was cat, uh, was Cascade Lofts. And on Cascade Lofts, there was a lot of concern about a beautiful walnut tree that sits at the corner of, um, Eighth and, and Cascade. And, uh, there was a lot of concern that the development that we were about to do is going to kill that tree. And, you know, we take a great pride in all the aspects of these projects. And that tree is still a beautiful walnut tree that, um, that shades the corner of, of, uh, Eighth and Cascade. Uh, you know, we've been doing these projects in Hood River for a long time. I, I feel like, you know, the reputation that we've built of, you know, following through on these things is, is, um, why our projects are highly valued and why, you know, some of these buildings do have a higher, higher property value than others. It's because thoughtful design, well done, consistent and, um, following through on these things. Um, I'm not sure if there was any other questions that were brought up. That, uh, I mean, there, there, there certainly was issues about traffic and parking. I think the parking was the other one.
Yeah. Parking on East Eugene or, or Hazel.
Well, and, and, and the pathway that connects the two. I mean, this, uh, city staff suggested that we, include a pathway that connects Hazel and Eugene. And we certainly agreed. I think that what, what I understood was the suggestion is that we would build a hard path that would probably be a stair at some point. Um, near, you know, it'd be, it'd be a hard path between, um, the top at Hazel and the shared driveway. And at the shared driveway, it would become the shared driveway, which isn't too steep because it's, it meets the requirements for the fire trucks. So the idea is that, 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 that would be the pathway that would connect, um, Hazel and Eugene Street. And that, that does dovetails into the parking situation because I think there's quite a bit. I should say quite a bit. There's capacity on Hazel, especially after it's widened to have, uh, on-street parking. And so I'll admit there's very little legal, uh, you know, good, good on-street parking on Eugene, but on Hazel, um, you know, Pete, every time I've been up to cars that are parked on Hazel, the, the widening and the improvements of Hazel will only make that more, more useful, especially in front of this project site, which is roughly 175 feet of frontage, which it equates to about seven or eight cars. So with that path on Hazel, I think that the benefit of it is, is that the guest parking that would, uh, be established on Hazel can then be easily accessed by the town home residents or the, you know, guests of the town home residents. So that was one of the reasons we, you know, gladly, uh, agreed to that condition that, um, Jennifer put, put, put into the staff report.
Okay. Just one other topic was potentially connecting a pedestrian crossing to the end of Indian Creek. Is that even across from where your site is at the most eastern end?
I don't know where that specifically would want to connect.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mark.
Welcome.
Okay. Now what we'll do is let's, um, go to a staff recap. Jennifer?
Thank you.
I think, um, you know, one question that I have for staff as you recap is, um, in fact, we got some good testimony coming in from Arthur Bevits around, let's say the, uh, trajectory of this end of town and what the city might be thinking about as we see more development at this end of town. Several folks mentioned, you know, what could potentially happen if we continue to develop at this, at the scale of that end of town? Is there something that we can do as a planning commission to have the city be thinking about that?
Yes, thank you. Um, I have, um, shared most of the test, written testimony that's come in with the engineering department. And I will make sure that they have everything that has come in. To, just to share those concerns, um, I know that, um, there have been other instances in the past where a neighborhood has had a concern related to on-street parking versus a bike lane and that in one part of town where the neighborhood sort of came together with a consensus of what they, their question or request was to, um, either the city engineer or the city council and, and brought forth that consensus thinking about. And in this case, maybe it's for intersections that have been identified as pinch points. So I, I would do plan to communicate the concerns that we've heard with the engineering department. I don't know what the specific plans are for getting, um, any particular improvements into the capital, capital facilities plan. But I will pass that along. I, I would say that engineering, public works has been receptive to adding some no parking signs where needed in this neighborhood, um, in the vicinity of the Indian Creek Trailhead. And what I think has been most successful is when neighbors get together to make, uh, a group request that where everybody's sort of on the same page about a specific sign request or traffic calming request, et cetera. On the traffic calming in particular, I know that engineering will not entertain, um, speed bumps because of the snowplow challenges, but there are potentially other traffic calming, um, techniques that could be employed. However, I also know that in, and I'm not a traffic engineer, but there are some sections in this neighborhood where this posted speed limit is 10 miles an hour, which is a traffic calming device in itself. So, I can't answer what, what types of specific traffic calming items that public works and engineering might be receptive to, but, um, they would be entertaining those suggestions. Let's see, I had some other notes. There were, um, comments about, uh, the P U D planning process and that it's a discretionary planning process. Suggestion that the planning commission, she should use its discretion in deciding whether or not to approve this, um, proposed development. And that is a discretionary planning process that's used to help, provide some flexibility in site layout, um, and sharing driveways, um, providing, um, cohesive design and landscaping and those types of things. Um, for the planning commission, what you need to focus in on are the land use standards and criteria. And if there is a criteria you feel is not, uh, the applicant has not demonstrated that they have met, then either asking questions until you're comfortable that those are met or asking for additional information to be brought, um, if necessary to another meeting. As far as the traffic study goes, I also am not a traffic engineer. Um, and as the applicant described, those studies are done by traffic engineers and reviewed by traffic engineers. If there are specific questions about the traffic study that either the applicant or planning staff cannot answer tonight, we can, uh, take those questions to the engineering department for further explanation. If, if you feel that that's needed in order to make your decision. Let's see here. I will say that there were some, I, I said, um, that it's the, the engineer has the authority to, um, grant design exceptions to the street standards, which is true. I would say that those exceptions are not, um, considered in a vacuum. And I think it's my understanding that the engineering department has heard concerns from neighbors about the trees on the north side of Eugene, um, that the neighbors are interested in retaining. Um, and my understanding is that, that engineering has been trying to work around those trees. Because of that neighbor, neighborhood interest in retaining the trees. So those decisions, while they are So those decisions, while they are under the authority of the city engineer, he's not necessarily making them in a vacuum. Let's see. And just as far as the pathway location, yes, this was better explained in the written staff report, but the idea was that the alignment of the pathway would be coincident with the shared driveway in the middle of the site. And then where that driveway ends up through the rest of the site would be a path developed by the developer. And then as far as the preliminary versus final plans, I also, I'd like to just make it clear that the preliminary plans need to have enough information to demonstrate the land use criteria are met. The final plans, when we receive those for permitting, they need to align with the preliminary plans and meet all of the conditions of approval in the staff report. So on the setback question, for instance, it appears that the preliminary plans do meet the setbacks. What I was trying to explain is that when we get the final plans, we don't just assume that they're met. We double check and we verify and make sure that they're met. And those conditions sometimes are in there as much as a reminder to staff to look for specific things as anything else. So hopefully that clarifies the relationship between preliminary and final plans. Trees on the west side of the property, there is a condition of approval that tends to address retaining those trees, condition of approval number 18 includes a provision that the tree protection plan is to include measures to protect existing mature trees located on the western property boundary or adjacent and just off-site to the west. And let's see here. That's, I think I covered what I had in my notes as far as a recap goes. But I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you may have after hearing testimony and the applicant's presentation.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Mr. Chair, just as a heads up, we do have one hand, I think, that has been raised.
Yes, let's go with Sophia. Pro Cop. Sophia.
Hello, my name is Sophia Pro Cop. Okay, my name is Sophia Pro Cop. I I live on East Fourth Street at the eastern end of Hazel, where Hazel turns northward to East Fourth. My concern is the stormwater. And the number, the increase of the vehicular traffic load that this development will place on the roads around here, as mentioned, they're narrow, have a lot of water flowing over them. And the south side of Hazel is currently being undermined with stormwater in the winters. There's a hole in the asphalt that flows over the edge off of the bluff into the Hood River there. And I was just wondering if that could be looked at and if there's any sort of clause or contingency on a development of this nature, a PUD like this having a disproportionate responsibility for the wear and tear on the roads of a neighborhood where the roads are already questionable and old and have a lot of edge issues with the slopes around and the asphalt crumbling off of the edges. And then I had another comment. I'm very, I'm very glad to hear the oak trees talked about preserving as many as we possibly can. But again, the concern of the follow-through there is that any, any impact within, any construction within the drip line of the existing trees can even 10 years down the road cause earlier death than there would be. And so any development happening on this property is already going to very much compromise a lot of the trees, even the ones that are marked for saving. And then my third comment was the chapel was mentioned by Mark as being moved into the open space of the 10-unit development. I am wondering, it's currently at such a slanted angle. It doesn't seem safe for human inhabitants. I'm wondering why that would be placed there. Obviously, it would be shored up a bit, I'm sure, but it just seems like it would be sort of taking up the space of the only open space for these 10 different families. So I just had a question about that. And thank you for, thank you very much for hearing me out. I know I was a bit late to raise my hand. So thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Sophia.
Mr. Chair, could we have her explaining the location of the stormwater question she was asking about? I think it's uphill from the site, if I understood correctly, but I wasn't quite sure.
Okay, Sophia, you're still on?
Yes, downhill of the site, east of the site on Hazel, there is a sinkhole happening that is small in diameter currently, but you can tell it's undermining underneath the asphalt on the south side of the very east end of Hazel.
Okay. Jennifer, is that good?
Yeah, so I think maybe adjacent to 424 East Third Street, is that correct?
So where Hazel ends on its farther, farthest eastern end, I'd say it's 100 yards west of the east end of Hazel.
So closer to East Fourth Street.
Correct.
Okay, that's pretty far from this site. So that's something that I'll try to bring up with our public works engineering department to look at separate from this development.
Yeah.
Okay, I just know that the asphalt wears and the increase of the vehicular load that this 10-unit development would, would bring to this, this corner is why I was just bringing it up as a, if there's any kind of way to help mitigate that using using this as a chance, since it's going to increase the load.
All right. Thanks for those comments, Sophia. Dustin, I think that's an interesting segue into a question that I had, which is really addressing what Arthur Babitz's testimony, written testimony was talking about, which is as this end of the neighborhood develops, you know, what's longer-term plan and what responsibility or was we as a planning commission can take back to the city in terms of looking at the the traffic flows and other improvements that could be made?
Yeah, so if we're, you know, not unlike the rest of town, there's, there's work to be done in places regarding safety issues, capacity issues, identified deficiencies and upgrades. So public works and engineering is constantly adding that. And much like your TSP, which identified a significant number of capital projects that are on our list. We program those as development occurs. And as, as simply as a course of business, if there's an area that all receives significant impact and is noticeably call it more deficient, you know, we can forward that to engineering and public works too for considerations. So if there is some, something within the findings that you would wish to convey to engineering, it may be a place for that. We can convey it as well. We also need to be mindful regarding issues of nexus and proportionality. As developments go through, our engineering team will review the impacts, the relationship and the amount of improvements that can be essentially lawfully put on the developer. Developer is responsible for a certain amount of upgrades. It can't necessarily be held responsible for a regional or neighborhood upgrade where there's deficiencies that are beyond the scope of its work or beyond the proportion of its work. So for example, if this was a 30-unit development or a larger development, the amount or proportional impacts could be in the amount of improvements that could be exacted from the developer would grow. So when we start identifying neighborhood issues, we, we, we have to think about that as well, as well. And our engineering team evaluates that when it makes its conditions, when it evaluates these plans and identifies which are prioritized or needed improvements that have to be addressed. In terms of conveying this to the city, and essentially the city council, who sets budget and approves year-in, year-out work projects, that would be something that we could identify as something that that should be evaluated at the city council level and then direct down through them to public works and the city's engineer.
Okay. All right. Thanks for that. Any questions for staff from the commission?
I guess I just had a quickie, and that is, what is the status of on-street parking in that neighborhood? Is it, I heard it was not permitted on those streets, or it is permitted and just wherever someone can fit in? Does anyone know the answer to that?
I don't think there's one answer there. Where there's room for on-street parking, it's allowed. Where there's not room, it's not allowed. Do you think the city engineer was looking at East Hazel and trying to determine whether there was room for both on-street parking and a sidewalk? And I don't think he will know that answer until he gets more detailed surveying information from the applicant. So as far as what might be improved there, I don't think it's been definitively determined.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners? For staff, before we close the hearing and move to deliberation? I see two questions popped up from, from from the audience. I mean, generally, at this point in the hearing, we have moved on, but I will, if you could keep your comments brief, I will allow you to speak, but remember that the applicant will have a chance to rebut after you speak. So Samantha, do you have a quick question? Can we promote her?
Yeah, just speaking on the parking, earlier it noted there were 22 parking spaces available in the new project. Is that, did I read that wrong? I don't understand what that note was on the screen when you were going through the parking, off-street parking on the project. It said that there were up to 22 available parking spots.
Yeah, the typical ratio would be two parking spaces per unit, and they also had two guest spots. So we can let the applicant respond. Did you have any other questions?
No, I just want to know exactly how many parking spots that are going to be on there. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Samantha. And then we have a Galaxy A10E. Can we just promote that? Okay, if you could just give your name and address and ask a question?
Yeah, it's Chris Gardner. I live at 410 East Eugene Street at the corner of Bluff at the fishbowl of the world. I guess everyone's already stated most of my concerns. I just wanted to restate the fact that the amount of traffic that's going to be inundated in this area is unsustainable. And that if the project could consider taking units away, the amount of units that they're going to do in this whole thing, instead of 10, maybe you make eight. Throttle it back a little, just to accommodate the impact on our, on our lives. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Chris. Mark, I'll give you a chance to any response that you want to make to either Samantha's comment around the 22 parking spaces or Chris's comment around numbers of units and traffic impact?
Well, I think I, I think I presented the information on density, and we've talked about traffic a lot. I'll let that go. But I clarify the parking. There are two parking spaces per unit that are dedicated for the units. Then there's two guest parking spots. And so that adds up to 22. But in addition to that, the two single-family homes on Hazel actually have driveways that can accommodate guest parking as well. So at least two more spaces for each. So, you know, the guest parking for the single-family homes can, can be accommodated onsite, adding, you know, specifically for those two units, another four spaces. So, but I counted 22 as just the dedicated parking that is sort of, you know, for, in garages plus the two guest spaces.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Mark. All right. With that, then we will close the hearing and move to deliberation. If we could go through, there's four planning commissioners in attendance, including me. So if we could just get some commentary from each of you, things that we want to just check in on is the idea of the open space. You can go back to that. Remember that topic around including the open space around the entire site, including the open area. And then any thoughts, if you have any, on the pedestrian path? And then anything else you want to raise? But we can go around the horn. Be great to hear from everyone. We go in alphabetical order. Amy, how about you?
So first of all, I really want to say that I really appreciate Mark Vander's engine, sorry, knocking your last name right. But I really appreciate how you're willing to work with the neighbors. I think that's great. And really making sure you follow up on that. So thank you. The, my question was the pedestrian path. So you said that it would probably go down the length of the shared driveway. I'm assuming you would probably use some design elements in order to ensure that it was obvious that that was a, a public pathway. I guess my concern would just be that we go through the lines of adding this great public pathway, but people don't know that it's public and that they can walk down the driveway. Yeah, other than that, I didn't have any other concerns.
All right. That's more of a comment for Mark and team. Okay, Erica, how about you?
Too many new buttons.
Yep, here we go.
I don't have. Yeah, I don't have any questions or concerns. I think the land use portion is fairly clear and the current concerns are more widespread in the greater neighborhood with traffic and pedestrian safety.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Erica. Tina?
Yeah, I agree. I think the applicant has done a real admirable job of working with this site. So my concerns are, are not with their design. It's actually with the site. I just and I'm not, I guess I'm a little stymied on, on how we can best approach this. I just feel like, you know, in four years, we've seen in four years on the planning commission, I just, we've seen so many issues with these like narrow streets that have gotten built up in the past, and then it kind of comes back to bite us. You know, it's like, all of a sudden, there's safety issues and parking issues and children playing issues. And I feel like we're going down that road again. And we all acknowledge it, but yet we're going to continue to keep letting it happen. we're going to continue to keep letting it happen. You know, I I applaud the improvements we're talking about doing. And for the record, I I don't want to widen the road at the cost of the oak trees. But I just, it just doesn't feel like it's enough. You know, I mean, what we're hearing is we have, you know, a narrow a narrow street, a lack of sidewalks, blind corners, steep hills, drainage issues, fire issues. And so it's already, it's already so much. And then, you know, the fact that the city, the city engineer is willing to make a bunch of exceptions that, you know, we're saying, well, you know, you should be doing this and we should be doing that. But, you know, because of the topographic constraints, we won't make you do that. And then the city is willing to say, well, if you, you know, forty-seven conditions, we'll let you do it. It just, that kind of signals to me that we're just bending too much to let this happen. I just, you know, I feel like we keep getting the, we keep getting the development and we keep not, we keep kind of pushing the infrastructure problem down the road. And and I just don't think we can we can keep doing that. We just can't keep shoehorning in these developments and then say like, you know, we'll fix this next year because we've been doing that for too long. And that's why we have all these safety issues and we have all these places where people can't walk and kids can't ride their bikes. And and I guess, you know, I know I'm I'm kind of on a soapbox, but the question is, how how do we address that? I mean, it seems to me that this is the city's issue to say, whoa, we got to stop adding more units until we figure out how we can fix some of these places. And yeah, and it goes back to Arthur had good comments. And I think Mike Stroud, you know, we kind of hit the spots, right? There's like, there's just places that it's absurd. It's it's not even, it's like, not even the width of a driveway. And now we're saying, yeah, let's let's just keep adding houses. And I just, I just don't think it's it's feasible. And I don't think we're serving our residents by by continuing to add these homes that, you know, don't, we just don't have the infrastructure for it. So that's my two cents. Now we need to debate what we what we should do about it.
So, yeah, thanks for that, Tina. I mean, I'm in total agreement. I think when you look at what the developer has to work with here in terms of site and the zoning that is allowed on the site and what they could do versus what they're doing, I think they're being sensitive. But as you say, this area of town, as designed, as designated as R3, like, we're not even close to what this end of town could look like if all of these lots were developed as an R3. And like you say, it's it's making a situation that is getting challenging. It could be just kind of over the edge in terms of density and and, you know, to put to put an R3 neighborhood like this with such constraints in terms of access points, that seems to be the miss that happened a long time ago. When you consider how much this could develop this end of town. But I don't think it's anything that, let's say, you know, in this application at this time, I, you know, I don't see anything that that would that should stop this from going forward because I think it is a somewhat sensitive development based on what it could be. But but the longer term story for this end of town, I think, should be addressed.
Can we add, so, you know, it'll decide to approve this, can we add some sort of language in the recommendation to also ensure that there are that the the city engineer looks at traffic calming mitigations that would be appropriate for this area?
I mean, I think that's what I was trying to ask Dustin, which is like, what could we do on a broader scale to to highlight what improvements could be made? I mean, you know, the ten mile an hour signs really do call this out. It's like the slowest neighborhood in town. But nevertheless, you know, if if development continues at this pace, you know, it could be really bad. Dustin, we're in deliberation, but I don't know. Did you want to weigh in?
No, just if only if you want me to weigh in. So it's it's your deliberation.
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess I was thinking along the lines of notes in the decision based upon approval or or kind of a scope of of the request that's before you, not the the scope of the twenty-twenty-one project list.
Right.
In terms of final plan. So.
Yeah. So I think let's come back to the application and 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 see if we have any issues with approving the application. So Tina, would you have issues with approving this application?
Um, well, I, there are some specific, yeah, I mean, this is where, like I said, it's kind of a, it's more, I don't know, the legal question on, you know, it's it's kind of a hard stop for me in terms of doing any more development until the city kind of can figure out how to improve these roads. I think I think it's a fool's errand to add ten more homes to a place where two of the main streets in the development are the width of a driveway and they come together in a V on a hill. It's just, it's, I mean, it's it's kind of insanity is what it is. I mean, but I mean, again, I'm not, I'm not fighting fault with the with the applicant, but I just feel that if we approve this one and then the next one's going to come up and and the planning condition does the same thing and the city does the same thing. And then five years from now, we have what, a hun, you know, there's, there's more infill that's going to be done as people knock these houses down and build more units. And I just don't think we can keep kicking the can down the road. So, yeah, I I have definite problems on approval. If you want to get into specific, I would say the open space issue is probably worth addressing. Do you count the perimeter? I would say no. I think the triple driveways on Eugene is probably something, you know, we've heard from the neighbors that that's a concern to them. I think we should probably, you know, give that some some thought about ways that could be amended.
Okay. Do you want to make your comment there about the driveway? Are you worried about a shared driveway for the pathway or the access off the road?
No, the the multiple access points in that short a period of time that they were willing, engineers wanting to say, yeah, we can have those multiple driveways, even though it typically wouldn't be allowed. You know, I think what we hear neighbors saying is, you know, there are kids, there's already, you know, narrow streets and you have, you know, kids walking and bikers coming by and people going Indian Creek Trail and now you're going to have more people backing out of driveways. That seems, I don't know why we're approving that that condition.
All right, let's talk about it. I mean, I think, I mean, what I noticed, I mean, that whole area, whether you're on Bluff or Hazel or Eugene, there's a lot of houses that have driveway access straight off the mains off the street. And and I saw a lot of cars parked nose in that would be backing out onto all of those roads. So it feels that it's not a, you know, not a stretch to have these, this development back out onto Eugene. And again, I mean, you know, there's so many signs which are, you know, ten miles an hour. It feels like we're not talking about the fastest roads in town here that people would be backing out on to. But I'm interested in hearing other people's thoughts around that, Amy and Erica?
I just don't know how, oh, go, go ahead, Amy. I was just gonna say, I don't know how, you know, other than making recommendations with with our decision on this, I'm I'm not sure how to enforce it.
And well, so one question is, is, well, okay, so, yeah, if the if the city engineer says they'll allow it, I don't know that we can go back and say, we don't like the spacing. That's what you're saying, Erica?
Yeah.
Okay. And Amy?
Yeah, she voiced exactly what I was trying to convey or wanted to convey.
I just think, Tina, looking around this entire neighborhood, that it would be somewhat unfair to say, in this location, we have a different standard around backing out off the street.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree. It's it is, again, it's this, it's this cumulative, you know?
Yeah.
Then is the next, are we going to allow three driveways on the street? You know, it's just, it's going to continue to accelerate the, you know, the the problems that the neighbors have already brought up. And I mean, I just, I guess I just feel strongly that like, our role as planning commission is to be the voice of the of this of the residents, right? I mean, the city's kind of stated its point, the city engineer and the planning department, they've all weighed in. And now it's like, we're the public. And we're hearing a lot of people in that neighborhood, you know, say like, come on, you guys, this is crazy. Like, get up here and look at this neighborhood. And and I just feel like we need to, we need to give them that voice and we need to think hard about what we can do differently for this. Because, you know, yeah, it's an old neighborhood, Erica. It's not like it's, I'm not blaming the city for the issues, but it's, I'm sure it worked well when everybody was on horses, you know. But, you know, to just keep, I mean, I don't know, did we put a building moratorium on this neighborhood until we can make some infrastructure improvements? I don't know the answer. I mean, and that's where I guess, like I said, I struggle with this. I mean, I just have, I just can't ethically like rubber stamp approve something that seems like it's just inherently creating problems for the people who already live here.
Yeah. So Dustin, I mean, that that does, I mean, come back. I mean, I I feel like this, let's say, given the given what's what's available here in terms of the zoning and the site and all this type of stuff, I don't see any issues with approving this development. But I do feel like there needs to be a kind of a whoa, a timeout called. And I'm I'm with Tina on that part of her discussion, right? Not not anything that we can do around this development. I think that there's some good work that's been done here. But from this point on, I feel like we need to even perhaps look at the zoning area, zoning in this area. I mean, it's just, it seems it seems like a disaster waiting for happen, right? In terms of what would happen if they continued to build out in this density in this neck of the woods?
So I think this is, you know, kind of, let's take it back to the preamble in the opening of the meeting, the role of the the planning commission's responsibility is to be not more restrictive nor lenient than the code.
Yeah.
Oh, that's, that's kind of what our charge, real narrow charges here, to look at the code and evaluate the the evidence that the applicant has brought forward and doesn't meet the burden. When it comes to the discussions of moratorium, it's a pretty serious charge that would really have to come from, that would come from the top and they would have to have some findings and evidence that there was something that was really so immediate and insurmountable that it that it would warrant basically taking someone's property rights and have to be set most likely with a certain amount of time in order to justify the remedy. So you can't just say, we're going to moratorium until, you know, or long, you know, we we that flies right in the face of 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 some of these property rights that are bundled up right now. And that that would certainly have to be a discussion that would occur at the at the corporate authority level with with some good legal advice and really remedy and a reason with some findings on on why that became the necessary, a necessary remedy to the issue at hand.
Yeah.
I get that. That's why I thought it was like more of a legal question than anything because it's.
Very much a legal question. Yeah. And I'm not a lawyer. So but I put that out there. That is not legal advice. But that is, that would very much have a legal corporate authority elected official, highest elected official kind of movement there.
Okay.
But I mean, I hope the city understands the frustration of, I don't want to speak for the whole planning commission, of some planning, some of the planning commission members and the public in general. It's like, you know, we say, oh, this is a conditional use, so it has to go out for the public comment. And it's, you know, and it's, it's, you know, created this whole hearing and meeting. But then we kind of come back and say, oh, well, you can't really, you can't really do anything about this, you know. It's it's sort of like, you've asked all these people to testify, but we kind of say that we can't, our hands are tied anyway. That's kind of what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's not much discretion, I would say, in terms of what's been presented here. Not too many discretionary elements, I think. Do we think the traffic's going to get worse? Yeah. But is it within the the legal confines of the space that they have? Yes, you know, so I don't, I don't see a way to deny it. Well, do we want to take a straw man vote? I guess Dustin, we have four out of the seven planning commissioners here. Do we need to have all four or all four intendants vote to pass this? Or do we need a, is it a is it a majority of the four that are here that we need? Or is it a majority of the seven? Oh, Jennifer?
I believe it's a majority of the four.
Okay. All right. Well, Tina, what do you think?
Well, if it's the majority of the four, I would like to abstain on my final vote as a planning commissioner. I just, I can't, I can't in good conscience prove it, but I agree that, I agree that it probably meets the criteria. I just.
Okay.
That's my, abstain.
All right.
Abstention.
All right. Well, it's, I would like to hear a motion from somebody, Amy or Erica, if you want to make a motion to approve the application for a file twenty-twenty-one dash oh seven?
This, this is Erica. I can make a motion to approve file twenty-one dash oh seven seven. Did I get the number right?
Oh, seven. Yep.
Oh, seven.
I will second that motion.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor to approve file number twenty-twenty-one dash oh seven, as as written by the staff reports with the conditions of approval as written with no changes. And we have a motion by Erica Price and second by Amy Schlappi. Any further discussion? All right. How do you vote? Amy?
Aye.
Erica?
Aye.
Tina?
Abstain.
And Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you, everyone, for your thoughtfulness around this application tonight. I know, I know we struggled with some elements about this, but I appreciate the the applicant and the work that they've done and working with the city to get this through. So thanks for your time and effort in this in this regard. All right. With that, the meeting is, is there any other any other matters for tonight?
Mr. Chair, we handled the minutes first. So thank you all for your time. Again, Commissioner Lasson, thank you for your service here to the community. And we will, we'll see you soon.
They'll be happy to see me go, but I'll still be attending as a citizen advocate.
All right. Thank you very, Tina, for all your work. Thanks for speaking up there. All right. Thanks all. Bye.
Take care.